Today will be given by Pastor Tara Thompson of St. Andrews Presbyterian Church. If you will please come forward. Everyone, please silence your cell phones and please remain standing for our nation's flag. Thank you.
Let us pray. Almighty God, Creator of heaven and earth, we are gathered here today to do the work that has been entrusted to us. Sometimes this work seems tedious, other times daunting, and other times it gives us joy. Regardless of the work that is before us and how we might feel about it, Lord, it is all holy work. So we ask that you would guide us in our decisions and in our conversations, that we would make choices which are pleasing to you, which are honoring to the citizens that we are entrusted to care for. We find ourselves on this 28th day of June situated between two celebrations of freedom, Juneteenth and the Fourth of July. Lord, we would be remiss if we did not give you thanks for the freedoms that we enjoy, for the liberties that we get to celebrate. But even in our gratitude, Lord, we also need to be mindful of those who are often overlooked and those who feel as though they don't enjoy the same freedoms that we have. We are mindful of Paul's word to the church, that we are to use our freedom to serve one another. So may the decisions that we make and the choices that we have before us this day, may they be guided by a spirit of service for one another. I pray all of this in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all. Thank you. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Muton?
Present.
Mayor Protem Samuel?
Present.
Councilmember Duriel?
Here.
Councilmember Getz?
Present.
Councilmember Phil Shaw?
Present.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Turner?
Present.
And Councilmember Neal?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have no presentations, no proclamations, and no recognitions today, but I would like to read, at the close of the city council meeting today, the council will hold an executive session to deliberate the appointment, employment, and duties of the city manager position in accordance with Section 551.074 of the Government Code Personnel Matters. Closing meeting of Chris S. Boone, Lionel D. Lines, Kenneth R. Williams, to discuss and deliberate economic development negotiations in accordance with Section 551.087 of the Government Code to with specifically Project Deep Blue and Project Mercury. Thank you. At this time, if anyone would like to make public comment, now's the time for any citizen. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room, she will call your name and the order in which she has received it on consent agenda items number one through three.
I don't have any mayor.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would like to call for a motion for the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any? Yes, Councilmember Getz.
Yes, with regard to consent agenda item G, when we originally considered this, there were going to be four locations of traffic signals that we were going to be impacted by this funding agreement, and that was reduced to two because of some issues that Tech dot had with the way the city was going to go about that. Bart, could you explain what concerns Tech dot had and what we might be able to do to try to get this, get all four locations back?
We planned and submitted the funding originally with the assumption that the HSIP or Highway Safety Improvement Program, which utilizes federal highway money, that it would allow us to purchase the equipment, and then we would use city forces to install all of the equipment in our signalized intersections. Through an ongoing conversation with the Tech dot district office, they've since advised us that we need to have contractors install, both purchase and install the equipment. So in other words, they want us to let the project out for the complete purchase and install by an outside third party. And that's why we've scaled this back to just Fort and Gladys rather than Fort, Gladys, Highland, and Phelan.
So obviously, if we bring in contractors instead of using city forces, that's going to add to the overall price tag. And I recognize that, so I reached out to Tech dot and asked them if they could somehow consider allowing us to do this, or what was the reason for us to use contractors? Because in this day and time, we want our dollars to stretch just as far as they possibly can. And Mr. Gonzalez, the local engineer from Tech dot, has agreed to sit down with you and, you know, and Chris and whoever else needs to be involved in it, but to have a conversation about maybe revisiting this. I don't want to jeopardize getting this, but I do want us to take advantage of his offer to sit down and try to work through this in a way that we can maximize our tax dollars to get the biggest bang for the buck that we can, if we could do that.
And that'd be great. If they'd reverse their, what they've been telling us and let us do the original plan, we're still willing to do so. Today's item would give Mr. Boone the authority to negotiate a new AFA if that's required. If it's not required and they let us go on the original AFA, then we're all good. That was passed when it first came to council.
Well, if this is time sensitive, then I'd say we need to consider, but if it's not time sensitive, maybe we should table it, but...
They're saying it is time sensitive, and we don't have this AFA yet, so we can just simply not sign this one and go with the original.
Right. We intentionally worded it the way we did so that the resolution that's attached to it, in the event that we were able to add more to it, we can do that. So the approval today wouldn't prohibit us from going back and going back to the four, but it would also let them move forward with getting the two done today. So if it was approved and it's the will of the council for us to revisit it to try to get the four, we can still do that, and nothing about you approving, as is written today, would prohibit you from doing that, because it does allow for amendments.
Well done. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I think it'd be great if we can bring Mr. Gonzalez in to City Hall, Mr. Boone, yourself, we, maybe we can get this straightened back out. That'd be great.
Yeah, I don't want to put him on the spot, but Kenneth Weimers is here with Tech dot, but if you have anything to add, if not, then we can, you know, set up a meeting with y'all later.
So thank you for calling me out, Chris.
Yes, sir.
I was here just to answer questions. My name is Kenneth Weimers. I'm the Director of Transportation Operations for the Tech dot Beaumont District and a constituent of Mr. Getz, so proud to live here in Beaumont. Really do want to see this project move forward. It will really help move congestion down these two roads and reduce crashes, which is the big purpose of this project. It was a highway safety improvement project. Big kudos to the city for going through the effort of scoping it, estimating it, and working through this as one of our local partners to improve the city streets through this federal-funded project. It's not a grant. It was a competitive process, and this project scored well enough to get this funding. So really appreciated Bart helping jump through the hoops on our first round to try to get all four, redid those proposals to get us this funding for the two. As part of getting that funding, the intent of this project is for the contractor to buy the materials and install it. And so want to honor the intent of this federal program to make that happen as step one. If we can't get that, which right now, the current estimate shows we can have the contractor buy it and install it for the money that's been granted, yeah, definitely, we will talk and find ways to still deliver this project. The AFA, it will need to be amended to have just the two roads, right? Don't want to put in there, promise it four, when we know at the day one, we're only going to try to do two. So with that, we will amend it. All the stipulations of the original AFA are going to be part of the revised one, it's just going to show the two roads, sir.
One question. Mr. Weimers, thank you for being here and answering these questions. I'm just having a little bit of a difficult time understanding, you said the intent is to have the contractor, but the effect of having the contractor do it is to cost more money, is what I'm being told, as opposed to letting the city use some of our resources and letting the city purchase the materials directly. What would be the problem with allowing that to happen?
Gotcha. So a big portion of it is the guidelines of that highway safety improvement project, right? So part of it states that the state has to let that project competitively through our process, through our federally approved process of doing it. So it's not the city buying them directly and installing it, it's, and it had some checks and balances with the way that we ended up working it out. So the contractor ends up buying it. We deliver it to the city, and then the city had a performance period to be able to install to ensure that we're getting that safety and congestion benefit from the project. And the contractor's still sitting there on hold, making sure that we are getting that installed properly and then timely. And part of getting this done to where the first time when we had all four, and we brought that up to a full plan set, ready to go to letting, ready to move forward, we still didn't have enough. And so if we're going to revisit this, which we have, which we still want to do these two projects, we want to do it as the original intent of the contractor to buy it, contractor to install it, as the state would do it with this federally funded project.
Okay, well...
We tried.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Any other discussion or questions? Good, Mike?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of approving, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any objections? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number one, please, Mr. Manager?
Yes, ma'am. Item number one is to authorize the interim city manager to award a contract to LD Construction of Beaumont for the Street Preservation Citywide Phase One Project. The citywide Phase One Project consists of spotful depth repair of existing asphalt and road base and a thin overlay resurfacing pavement with hot mix asphalt concrete. June 9, 2022, four bids were received for furnishing all labor, materials, and equipment for the project. The engineer's estimate for the project was $1.250 million. LD Construction responded with a bid of $1,334.33. A total of 180 days, calendar days, are allocated for completion of the project. Funds are available in the capital program, and we recommend approval of this resolution.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number one. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve the resolution.
I have a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor? Any discussion? I'm sorry.
I just had a question.
Sure. Councilmember Turner.
Bart, for the citizens watching, can we kind of explain how we came to the understanding of which streets we were particularly targeting and worked on?
So our normal street rehab, we mill eight to 10 inches of base material, put two and a three, two and a half to three inches of asphalt on top of it. That's to rehab a street that's in poor condition. What this project is intended to do is identify streets that are in good to fair condition that have been addressed through street rehab within the last 10 years, and do some base repairs, the streets in otherwise good condition, put a one-inch thin overlay on top, and extend the life of that road to where we don't have to go rehab it quite as soon. So what we used was the IMS pavement condition ratings, where the company had drove the entire town, gave us the ratings of that. We used that data and then drove the streets and selected the ones we felt would be good candidates to help stave off, you know, how soon we'd have to go do full rehab on them down the road.
Is this information available online for citizens to kind of see which streets are coming up?
Yes, as soon as council would pass it, we'll put it on the web along with everything else.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number two, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and council, item number two is to consider a resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the Texas Division of Emergency Management, or TDM, for Hazard Mitigation Grant Program funding, and authorize the mayor and/or interim city manager to act as the city's executive officer and authorize representative in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in the HMGP grant. The city of Beaumont desires to increase resilience to disasters and reduce or eliminate the long-term risk of loss of life, injury, damage to, and loss of property, and suffering in hardship by lessening the impact of future disasters. The city desires a viable community, including decent housing and suitable living environment, and expanding economic opportunities. It's necessary and in the best interest of the city to apply for this grant. The HMGP application would be authorized to be filed by the city of Beaumont with TDM for the mitigation efforts under DR Disaster Response 4485 Notice of Funding Opportunity. The projects detailed within the application will address major drainage improvements in the southeastern portion of the city of Beaumont, which were identified as a risk due to hurricanes and tropical storms in the past. The total project cost would be $47,102,735, to include construction, engineering, and acquisition, and associated services. The CDBG MIT application request amount will be 90% of the total project cost, and the application will require a match of 10% in the amount of $4.7 million committed by the City of Beaumont General Fund. The administration is recommending approval of this application.
Chris, I need to say one thing. We inadvertently mentioned CDBG in this item, that it should be HMGP only, not CDBG only.
Correction. Thank you, Bart.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number two. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Getz.
Bart, a few years ago, the city authorized and received a very comprehensive flooding program that detailed probably 20 or so projects, large price tag. Will this, if this grant is awarded, will this be a part of some of those projects?
There were three areas, three project areas defined in that study. This project actually grabs from three of those project areas. So as y'all know, our main outfalls for the city of Beaumont are the Natures River and the Hildebrandt Bayou. So we're kind of restricted in getting the water out in a lot of ways. What this project does is do the lifting to get an additional outfall over to the Natures River, so it puts two 10-by-10 boxes down Florida. It goes, the reason it's so expensive is it goes under a pipeline corridor, it goes under LMVA raw water pipeline, a railroad, and MLK. But it gives us the ability to then later build on this project and finish out the remainder of those three defined projects in the flood study. So it doesn't do all of them, but it lays the groundwork to do them all down the road in the future.
And how, what kind of timeline to do this? Should we be awarded this grant?
I'm not sure the exact timeline on this one. If we got it awarded, then we could line that out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, Bart, this is a $43 million grant, and we're only paying 4.7 million of the 47 million rate.
Yes.
10% match.
10%?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number three, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item number three is to consider a resolution approving a contract with Public Management of Cleveland, Texas for professional administration services related to the Texas General Land Office, or GLO, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery, or CDBGDR program. The professional administrator will develop project scope and complete the CDBGDR application associated with the 2019 disaster DR 4466 Tropical Storm Amelda. The city is considering applying for such funding for drainage improvements, mitigation, construction activities. The professional administrator will help with the GLO to fulfill state and federal CDBGDR statutory responsibilities related to recovery in connection with any federally declared disaster, and assist the GLO and/or grant recipients in completion of CDBGDR project. Three responses were received for this work and evaluated by city staff. The criterion scores are attached in your agenda item. Staff is recommending approval of award to Public Management of Cleveland, Texas.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number three. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Councilmember Neal?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, we've used Public Management for several years now, correct?
Yes, sir.
How, what kind of money has this company bought into the city over the years?
We haven't actually paid them anything yet, because the, under the Harvey program, they got 4%, I believe if I'm not mistaken, of any project awards, and unfortunately, we didn't get any of those awards. We had put in for that same South Park drainage that we just are putting in again, and we put in for the water, West End Water Plant, which we didn't get either. This as well would be contingent upon an award under the Amelda program, so we wouldn't pay them a dime unless we get a grant award.
So how many years have we used Public Management?
We've been working with them for four, three or four years?
Three or four, probably.
Yeah.
And they've never successfully brought anything to Beaumont?
Not through their own fault. We had a great application during Harvey, and it was just mis-scored, of course, from what we believe.
Yeah, no, we're happy with them. And again, as Bart mentioned, it's the grant, their pay is contingent upon awards, so in this case, it would be $95,000, but of course, it could be contingent upon a certain award amount.
Do we know what the success rate for these other firms are compared to Public Management?
I don't, but they're...
Public Management worked with a number of cities during the Harvey project and got award funding. We did not, neither did anyone within Jefferson County.
And I will say, we worked with Public Management going back to Hurricanes Ike, and they were very successful in helping us manage those programs.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? I'm sorry. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
One opposition. Thank you. The motion carries. Thank you. Mr. City Manager, will you please read the public hearing?
Yes. So next, I want to open up a public hearing to receive public input on community needs and discuss all funding opportunities for the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program. The grant opportunity is the General Land Office 2019 Disaster Competition. The maximum amount that can be awarded for this grant is $1 million with a 10% match in order to be competitive. The grant submission is due August 1, 2022. Eligible submissions will be infrastructure projects that tied back to Tropical Storm Amelda, and we're asking for you to open up the public hearing.
Yes, I will now open the public hearing. City clerk will call your name.
I don't have, I don't have any mayor.
No one? Okay, at this time, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you. So Mr. City Manager, at this time, will you please take us to our first discussion item?
Yes, ma'am. The first discussion item is a presentation to review and discuss redistricting, including a proposed map number one.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council staff, and citizens of Beaumont. First couple things I wanted to say, I missed the opportunity to get lunch in here in Beaumont today, so I'm a little sad. You guys are going to have to bear with me. No fault of any of you all, but just on my end, got here a little bit late. But also, secondly, what a, what a collection of suits we have here on the dais, and even out here in the crowd, I'm very impressed. Just wanted to put that out there. My name is Redson Pullum, and here on behalf of the Borcas Law Firm, here to work with you for redistricting, and we're going to be reviewing our first map that we put together, which is our first iteration and attempt at getting the districts or wards, sorry, rebalanced, and having them represent equality, one person, one vote standard as required by the law. Just a little bit of what we're going to talk about today, it's going to start with us overviewing the initial assessment map and data table that was provided at the last meeting, and it just gives you your current situation, the existing wards as they are today, and then we're going to go into the draft map that our firm has proposed and put together for you today. Lastly, we're going to discuss those changes. You'll be able to see what changed from the current existing map and what is different in the draft map. Then we'll just talk about what the next steps are and what our proposed schedule is for wrapping up this process. So as we usually always start, just as a reminder to citizens, that the Beaumont City Charter requires six council members and the mayor, one to be elected from each of the single-member wards, and then you have two elected at large. Reason that it's important in this process, because we're dealing with four wards, we have to make sure that they're equally or substantially equally populated in each, so everybody has that chance to elect the representatives of their choice. Just taking a look, I know it's been a little while, or we've all slept since the last time looked at the existing ward numbers, but this is the current breakdown of the wards and population in each ward as they exist today. We're noticing off the top, the second ward is the largest, coming in with about 31,925 people, and Ward Four is the smallest, with 23,502 people. That's a big enough gap to put the total deviation above what is the permissible amount of 10%. That third or fourth column there, the DEV, that stands for deviation, and that just is the calculation between each of the district numbers and what the target ideal size for each district or each ward should be. So that ideal ward size is 28,807. Those deviations are showing of how much above or below that 28,000 that that ward is currently sitting at. So what that means for the city of Beaumont, basically, we're going to have to do some rearranging of the districts to get us back into substantially equal populations as the law requires. Your current total deviation is 29.23%, which is well above that 10%. And as I said before, we've already identified the largest and smallest wards. Now, Ward One is also going to need to receive some changes or rebalancing, because it's so close to that 10% maximum anyways. If we were to just change those two districts, Ward Two and Ward Four, we would still have to deal with the deviation that Ward One is producing. So just a quick look at the contiguous boundaries of each of the wards and kind of get a snapshot of the demographics contained in each of the wards. See here, Ward One, that's one of the wards that's going to be changing slightly in our draft map plan. One of the things that we have to be aware of is the changes on each of the demographics within there, specifically the minority demographics, so we're making sure to abide by all those voting rights laws that are enacted. Ward Two, we're seeing here on the western side of Beaumont, has a... Ward Two, we're seeing here on the western side of Beaumont, has a majority white population, which will maintain mostly that, but you'll see a little bit of changes in Ward Two as well in the map plan. Ward Three, it is close to an ideal ward. There's very little deviation from what the target size is. You're seeing currently, it has 28,192 people as opposed to what the target size is, is 28,807. So a difference of about 1,615 people. In this first map plan, you will not see any changes in Ward Three. Ward Four, we have here, which is the smallest ward, this is obviously gonna be the one that's picking up most of the population out of the wards that have a little bit of population to give. The deviation for Ward Four is at 18, or negative 18.41%, which is well below what we would want it to, to achieve that one-person, one-vote standard. So here, and what's been provided to you is a depiction of our draft map. Draft map A is also accompanied by the data table that you were able to see and observe. On that data table, you have the total population, and then you also have the total voting age population, just as metrics to show what we're looking at and what we have to observe whenever making these changes in each of these wards. Now, one of the things that we established in the resolution and criteria for redistricting is that when we're making these changes, we're gonna start at the biggest level first, and that's the voting precinct or the voting tabulation districts, and try to address those to make the populations equal, rather than going in each street or each census block and kind of messing up the voting precinct's integrity. So that's what we were able to accomplish here in draft map A, where you can zero in where the change is, occurs in the center of the city, central, near Wards One, Two, and Four. So the population table for draft map A is shown here, but it's also been provided to you. One of the things that we highlight and look at, first, starting with the total deviation. If you're looking at about that third column there, deviation, you're seeing none of those from the highest and smallest deviations is equaling 10%, which is where we needed to get underneath. Right now, the deviation for draft map A is at 4.04%. So we're meeting that maximum that we needed to for that standard. Another thing that we look at in comparison to the numbers and demographic with the current existing makeup, we make sure as to not retrogress the minority populations. That means that their voting power in the total population and total voting age population are relatively maintained. You might see a little bit of difference, but if you're looking, let's say, in District or Ward Three and Ward Four, you're able to notice that it still maintains the black majority, both in the total population and voting age population. It's one of the things that we use as a tool to make sure we're not retrogressing or going afoul of any of those voting rights principles that we've been tasked with looking at. Here is just a zoomed-in, kind of detailed look at exactly where the changes are. So on your left, you have draft map A, which is the plan that we've proposed. And then on your right is the existing boundaries map, which is currently how Beaumont is made up right now. Immediately, what you're seeing change is Voting District Seven, that was in Ward One, that is now becoming a part of Ward Four. Then you see over here on the left side, you see Voting District Five is now becoming a part of Ward Four. So just that little change, though it seems very minor, it actually allowed us to get into balance. It kept those ratios of demographics at the percentages that we needed, and it presented the most unproblematic map plan that we could have put together. As I said, we could have went in and gone at a census block level and tried to change more streets or blocks acutely, but to come from this level allows for voters in those regions to maintain the same polling places, to be familiar, have a little bit more contiguacy in how they're made up. So it's easier for them to know where they'll be voting from, who they'll be voting for in the coming elections. Now, what changed, and this is just a brief overview of those changes. You see, Wards One, Two, and Four were all redrawn. Ward Three did not receive any changes as it is currently at a spot where it's acceptable and no changes were needed. District One will lose 2,544 people under this map plan. District Two will also lose 2,569 people under this plan. District Three remained the same, and District Four would pick up the sum of those two numbers at the top, which is 5,113 people, to bring this into a equal population. As I said, our firm has gone through to look at the numbers and make sure that there's no substantial retrogression in the minority voting power. And we believe, as put together, this is one of the better plans that we could have made. We did have, obviously, experience with other clients, so it's not always this easy. But this plan was actually, you know, it came together well, and we think it is one of the better ones that we could have drawn up for this process. Now, what's going to happen next? In the next meeting, we have planned for July 12th. We intend to host a public hearing where we give the citizens the opportunity to comment on the maps that have been presented thus far. But between here and then, we do have the opportunity to present another option or create another map, if that is the desire or will of the council. We do that as a part of our civic engagement to make sure citizens are aware of those changes that are occurring and to make sure they're engaged. You know, this is just as much a part of their process as it is everybody that's here sitting on the dais. Lastly, I believe we've planned to wrap this up by July 19th, and that will occur with an adoption of an ordinance that adopts whatever plan the council desires as the new boundary for the city of Beaumont. Then lastly, to wrap up this process with Bo, we give you a final report that contains all the information that we've taken from the beginning of this process to the end, including all the agendas, the notices that were sent out, the presentations, everything that you would need to be able to present or defend should you have any challenges to this map plan. Here is just a proposed timeline that's been updated with the relevant dates for the council's elections. You guys have elections in May. We have our first proposed hearing here in July 12th, coming after the Fourth of July holiday. Our recommended latest date is to adopt by July 19th, but that can also be very flexible. We can work with whatever the council desires. First day to file for a place on ballot for November elections, that's gonna be July 23rd. For May elections, that's gonna be January 18th of next year. And then you also see the corresponding dates for when those plans have to be in place three months prior to that election day in order to be effective. So, you know, hopefully, I saved you guys some time. I didn't want to come up here and be long-winded, but, you know, that is the plan that we essentially have, and I'm available to answer any questions that anyone may have at this point in time.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. I have a couple of questions, but I'm gonna yield to the council and allow them to question first. Anyone?
I have a question, Mayor.
Councilmember Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, can we get this PowerPoint and this map put on our website?
Yes, if it's not already, I think the intention is to put it on immediately after this.
All right, thank you.
And we also have a paper copy over here if the public wants to look at it after.
Any other comments?
Yes, I'd just like to tell Mr. Pullum, thank you for a very thorough presentation, and thank you for the assistance that you've given.
Thank you.
I agree with that comment, too.
Absolutely. Well done.
Thank you.
I, I can see the balance in it, and it is, it's, it's a well-balanced map. And just for the record, I would just love for you to state that the council had no input of what was presented today?
Yes, council literally had no input as to where these districts or wards would be moving, the voting districts. You know, we simply tried to give our first attempt at it from what we've observed with our previous conversations with council and staff. And, you know, like Mayor said, this is our first attempt, but we are presenting it today, proposing it as the draft map for the city of Beaumont.
I have one other question, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Neil, and then I'll go to Councilmember Duria.
Did you get any feedback from citizens?
I actually spoke with one after one meeting, and then I had a call with a citizen, just kind of asking about the basics of the redistricting process. But other than that, I didn't receive any citizen comments on the map or a citizen's submission of a map at this time.
All right, thank you.
Actually, that was a question I wanted to ask, but also, I want to thank you that I still live inside my ward.
Yeah. I would hate to have drawn somebody out of their, their ward. Cardinal Seamus.
Well, and, and I was yelling to wait for Councilmember Duria because Ward Four, I live in Ward Four, and Ward Four was the, the ward that was most impacted. And so now, it's, it's really at a balance, and you really don't realize that. But looking at it on paper, I, I never realized that it was so out of line with, with the other wards, because I served that ward for six years and did not realize that. Councilmember Turner.
I previously lived in Mike's Ward, Ward Two, but I'm now in Chris Duria's Ward, Ward Four. So you're my representative, Chris. But on average, how, like, with other cities and experience, how often is it that citizens actually do participate and actually submit a map? And do you normally get a lot of submissions, or is it kind of standard like it was with this particular instance?
This was, I would say, model as far as how our redistricting processes have gone with other citizens. One larger city, and I don't mind mentioning them, Arlington, they did have quite a bit of citizen comment and input. They actually put together a committee for that. But other than that, this is typical response that we have seen in our redistricting processes.
Just to remind the council, we did send out letters to individuals and organizations requesting maps. It was posted on our page. So we, we did coordinate with, with the firm to make sure that we did have some engagement from citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Felschah, then Councilmember Duria.
I'm just curious, this is for my own personal information. This is the first time I've gone through this process. How does this compare to the last time we did this, as far as how drastic the changes were? Is this comparable, more or less?
I think it's less, and it seems like we had a lot more map options we discussed last time. Three official, it seems like we maybe had some, a lot of draft maps, three official, though. But there was a lot more, a lot more analysis last time.
So this is, okay, this is not as drastic of a change?
In terms of change, no, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Duria.
I don't know if you can answer this, or maybe one of y'all can answer it. What would you think the, the loss that we have of almost, well, 5,000 people just in my ward, do you think those folks still live in Beaumont, just moved out of Beaumont? I mean, out of the ward, or do you think they're gone, or?
I can help you. So what happens is, like, doing the census, what you have to account for is, like, doing a regular census. You have people who are probably living at home, or, you know, are college students, and then they go off. So then when we redo the census, those people aren't accounted for. So you have to account for people who might have passed away, moved, moved away from home or are no longer using their mom's address as their permanent address while they're in college. So those are, those are big contributing factors, and what, what could have decreased the number. You also have to realize is that between that 2010 census and 2020 census, we had several hurricanes which may have relocated individuals as well.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll also add that there's been quite a bit of conversation about this last census. I mean, the census number is gospel, and we're essentially stuck with it, but there's been a lot of discussion about during the fact that the final count happened during the pandemic, we didn't have many, if all, field agents. And so a lot of the things we typically done in a, in a normal census were not, just for the, for whatever reason, were not done. So perhaps the count is a little low, but it is what it is.
Yes, Councilmember Getz.
You know, I appreciate that comment, Chris, because, you know, the census was taken during the pandemic. We don't know how accurate it was, but we do know, and we just saw on a news story last night, the number of housing starts that we've had in Beaumont in the last year. Those numbers don't seem to jive too well, because we had so, I mean, I don't know, maybe you recall what the number was, but it was large.
Right, and, but I do think it's fair to say, we've also had some, you know, it's fair to say we have had populations shift, I think, to the west. What's not reflected in these numbers are, you know, we've had a lot of multifamily projects that have been built, especially on a major, but I don't think any of them or not many of them have come online prior to the census of 2020. But yeah, to your point, it, it seems like our numbers are up, but, but again, it, to me, it goes back to the count, accuracy of the count.
Any other comment? I would like to say, this is one of the reasons when they say fill your census out, how important it is, and it affects so many things that you really don't realize it does affect.
Right.
Okay, so if there's no other questions or discussions, thank you so very much. We appreciate you. Okay, Mr. City Manager, will you please take us into our next discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Our next discussion item is to review and discuss a proposal from Economics Sustainability Institute, LLC, also known as Econo- Economics, to utilize a city-owned property of 125 Magnolia for an urban agriculture and educational use.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members, staff, and the good folks of Beaumont. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
We'll be resuming this, okay. So a little bit about us, Economics is a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organization. Our mission is to promote sustainable solutions to social, economic, and environmental challenges. Our focus is now on food security, which stands at the intersection of those three domains. Our executive director, Brooks C. East, I'm our president, John Wood, our treasurer is here, Diane DePerey. Our Bee Gardens pilot program, proposed at 125 Magnolia in Beaumont, Texas, is focused on increasing quality food access using urban agricultural technologies. This is motivated by several years of community organizing here and feedback from stakeholders throughout the community, including government leaders, business owners, religious leaders, and parents. And we partnered with the University of Houston Gerald D. Hines College of Architecture and Design, specifically their Graduate Design/Build Program, who came out to the site. Thank you, Chris Boone, for showing us the site, to create the architectural renderings that are displayed here. So this is the existing facade. This is a well-recognized structure in the community. It's been here for a long time. It's across the street from the event center. And as originally, the warehouse for Sears &amp; Roebuck is designed by, actually, a famous architect, George Dahl. It's cast-in-place concrete, which is an extraordinarily resilient structure. They don't build things like that anymore, as you know. It survived several hurricanes. According to a 2012 appraisal report prepared for the city, the improvements, that is, the structure, are at the end of their economic life and offer no measurable contributory value. As improved, it is a dilapidated structure that needs to be demolished to make way for alternative development of the land to its highest and best use. Now, what we are proposing is that instead of demolishing the structure, we would turn it into a gemstone for community resilience and food security, with benefits for the Beaumont Independent School District, the students and the teachers, local restaurateurs, food, food truck operators, and more. So Economics is asking the city to let us have this property to convert it into a community resilience center, featuring urban agricultural production, a commissary, and demonstration kitchen, food production, processing, and storage sites, and STEM educational opportunities for students and teachers. So this is the existing facade, as you can see, and if our, our work to that facade would, you could go ahead and advance it. This is what it would look like afterwards. So you can see an elevated structure on the roof. We're gonna get into detail with all the images that you see here next. So this is what it would look like from an aerial perspective when, when our plans are fully realized. Go ahead. So this is the entrance. You can see that loading dock and what appears to be an incinerator that's out of commission now that could service as a, as a brick pizza oven. You can see the, the interior now, there's a sort of a partition space that used to be administrative office. Uh, you can see it's obviously rundown and dilapidated. Uh, this is what it looks like now. Uh, the holes in the ceiling are evident, you can see water pooling on the floor. So it's, uh, it, it needs some love. Uh, it's not in compliance with the International Building Code. It's gonna need new electrical plumbing, the, the roof is gonna need to be replaced. Um, but it is a great canvas to work on. And this is what it would look like when we're finished. And you can actually toggle back and forth a couple of times just to kinda illustrate that. Uh, but from this perspective, we're standing in the farmer's market. And, uh, on the left side of your screen is the educational corridor. Uh, in the back is the production site, that's where hydroponics and aquaponics would be. You can see the staircase, uh, to a mezzanine level and all the way up to the vegetated roof. And you can't see it in this image, but to the right would be the demonstration kitchen, commissary, and classrooms. Go ahead. So this is an overall site plan, uh, that you can see all the different elements of the program here, from the entrance, the outdoor terrace, a farmer's market, the demonstration kitchen and commissary, instructional classrooms, restrooms, uh, the staircase to the mezzanine, uh, an educational corridor. And then obviously the main feature is that about a third of that space would be dedicated to food production. Uh, but we've also got room here for, uh, storage, processing, food prep, rainwater harvesting tanks, uh, and waste management around the back. Go ahead. This is another image of, of the site as developed with all those elements included. Go ahead, I'm happy to provide this stuff. Why did we choose this program design of all the different things that you could do on this space? Our policy objectives were based on feedback and expertise from the CEOs of multiple major food banks throughout the United States, which I personally spoke to and interviewed about this. Children's rights policy expertise from UNICEF, uh, professors of architecture, the CEOs of ag tech companies, I interviewed a few of those. Professional nonprofit grant writers at food NGOs, uh, that both of us have spoken with. Restoration contractors and structural engineers, they've looked at those blueprints, uh, and the site. These people build, uh, and repair damaged structures, um, as well as thought leaders in sustainable economic development and informal discussions with city leaders at, at a number of levels. So, you know, now we do want your feedback and a chance to answer your questions. Uh, but I'll give you some more historical context from the site and I will move as quickly as we can. But as you can see here, the green area was the old Southern Pacific Rail Yard. Uh, and that's why that building is built right up to the lot lines. It was loading freight right off the rail yard. Uh, but since then, this site has developed quite a bit. Uh, the city's had some major architectural advancements in the last several decades. Uh, but the, we're not done yet. Uh, we're still working on this Beaumont revitalization, the new event center, the Lake District. And we believe that our proposal here is, uh, consistent with the overall aesthetic objectives and land use objectives of the city downtown. Um, so this is more, uh, analysis of the site, uh, just to show you, we've, we've done our analysis. These are the, uh, local structures that are in the vicinity. Uh, this is some socioeconomic analysis, the next few slides. Those areas that are blocked out in black are technically food deserts. Uh, and so the orange square next to downtown, that's the one twenty-five Magnolia site. You can advance this, uh, this is an income range. Interesting juxtaposing this after the last, uh, presentation on redistricting, you can kinda see, uh, the, the structural parallels. Uh, go ahead. Uh, and then these blocks here are the schools. Uh, so there's seventeen thousand students in this area. Uh, and as you can see, the site that we're contemplating is pretty much in the center of the action. And that would be one of our main uses here and contributions to the ISD are the field trips from the schools to this site. Uh, so this is the lot line and aerial view. You can see the event center, uh, right there across the street. Historical Weiss Park to the north. Uh, now the line right above, uh, there's, there's city easement right of way, I think it is, right above the site. So we could actually work collaboratively with the city and adjacent property owners to maximize the utility of this site. Uh, we could get delivery trucks back there, um, waste management, uh, out the back so that it's not where the food consumption and where the entrance is. But, uh, using the local, um, and adjacent properties, we could do things. And we actually had discussion this morning with the owners of the site to the south, who are open to, uh, working something out, some creative land use so that that big green space there is a related amenity, whether that's parking or landscaping, we haven't decided yet, we would take feedback from the neighbors. Uh, but generally, they're very supportive of, of this vision. So the operation of the program would complement existing efforts by the Southeast Texas Food Bank and Beaumont ISD to promote food security in the region and would be synergistic with city's current efforts to revitalize downtown, increase tourism, stimulate economic development, and provide a farmer's market, as well as, uh, most importantly to us, looking after the needs of income-eligible members of the community. And we would aim to fill in an identified policy gap to increase quality food access, turning wholesome donated food into actual meals for income-eligible persons to support local farmers, to complement the cafeterias and restaurants of Beaumont with local fresh herbs and leafy greens, creating a third place to enjoy views of downtown on the vegetated roof, and to provide sanitation stations for local food trucks. Uh, they could come in and drop off their grease, refresh their water, uh, use the restroom facilities, and generally promote sanitation, uh, and food di- distribution. And it would make a three hundred and sixty-degree contribution of food security in the area. Growing, harvesting, processing, preparing, distributing, and consuming, of course, consuming the food. Uh, and otherwise, learning about all things, uh, organic food. So turning, uh, this space into a place means it actually serves the community, uh, which would obviously be an improvement over, uh, you know, an abandoned site. But specifically, we're talking about growing food that is best when fresh. So eliminating the food miles, uh, bringing food in from Houston, uh, or elsewhere. And so things like herbs, berries, leafy greens, that you can eliminate those food miles. It's best when you eat them right after harvest anyways. Uh, we would be giving local farmers a dedicated farmer's market. It's a platform for refrigerating their food and to keep their wares for sale, uh, which would be an improvement over the existing farmer's market. We'd provide local chefs with a demonstration kitchen to teach basic cooking techniques and promote nutrition, and maybe show off their, their menu. Um, and a community kitchen experience with a common house banquet hall, uh, feel that would, uh, feature locally grown and prepared meals. And, uh, food truck operators would have a commissary as discussed, which we think is a pretty important, um, amenity for them. This is the experiential learning zone, uh, which I'm particularly proud of because, uh, we think this is one of the biggest selling points, uh, to really, uh, and hit home the educational dimensions of this place. It would be a desirable, I think, to promote morale within the school district here of the teachers, as well as the students, to increase engagement and educational outcomes. Uh, the site would provide BISD students access to experiential learning, where math and science curriculum is brought to life, uh, by applying it to real-world challenges of food supply. Um, the infographics, the different, uh, placards you see there would feature concepts from chemistry, biology, physics, math, uh, all on display. Uh, and I think would be empowering to Beaumont ISD teachers. They'd have an engaging incentive-based platform where field trips to this site would be an enhanced outdoor classroom and could be tied into classroom performance. Uh, so this is a cross-section of the demonstration kitchen and cafe, which, you know, could suv, serve multiple purposes. That's essentially where the commissary would be. Uh, this is an angle of the production. You could see on the, uh, sort of the top and bottom, those big stacks, those are vertical, uh, hydroponic growing stations. And in the middle of the poles, that's an aquaponic growing station. So in the center there is actually a big water feature, sort of like a water fountain, but it has a fish tank in it. And I'm not sure how much you know about aquaponics, but the fish actually produce the fertilizer in the water. Uh, and so it's a closed-loop agricultural technology that would yield protein and also eliminate the need for petrochemical fertilizers. Um, and just to, uh, show you what that would look like, and this is the vertical gardens. Variety of different technologies exist. We've spoken to a few different ag tech companies and, uh, we'll probably narrow that down once we get further along. Uh, this is what it would look like built up, cause it's thirty-two thousand square feet with seventeen and a half foot ceilings. So it would be pretty impressive to walk around in this and to see it in action. There's another cross-section of the building, um, go ahead. There's your educational zone, cross-section, and it's two stories. And this is what it would look like, uh, on the roof. So you could get, take in views of downtown, enjoy locally-produced food. Uh, and there's all sorts of, uh, things that we could do with a platform like this, tying into the community, restaurateurs, educational programming, and wraparound social services that could be offered at a site like this. Uh, so that's our presentation. Uh, what we're asking from the city, uh, is, among other things, a letter of intent that would take away the risk from the city. Uh, we're willing to do that. We simply need site control to unlock the grants and donor funding. They need to know that we actually have possession of this to, to invest in it. Um, but if we're unable to raise adequate capital within a period of years, we would simply revert the property back to the city, uh, to try and, you know, do something else with it. Um, but that would be working in good faith with the city. And obviously, if we're close to our goals, you would wanna see us achieve that and we can get it done together. Um, but, uh, generally speaking, what we're asking from the city is a letter of intent, deed to the property that would, you know, be subject to a reversion as, as appropriate. Permits, zoning, and planning support so that we would have, we'd be in compliance from, uh, sanitation. Uh, if we're giving out food, we're gonna need to go through some permitting there, make sure that we're, uh, using this consistent with land use restrictions, hours of operation and so forth. It would be a semi, it's sort of like a park-like environment in part, so we do wanna keep it open as much as we can for the community. We would want the city to collaborate with us on grants, community development block grants especially. Um, and lastly, sharing data about the ISD, uh, the food flowing through that cafeteria, whatever we can do to try and increase the quality of that, or perhaps it's after-school programming, uh, and, uh, ideally, a, uh, some kind of a supply agreement with the ISD, uh, so that we could be delivering food to the schools.
Have a question.
Yes.
Has this been presented to Beaumont Independent School District? Has it and will it?
Um, we haven't had any formal discussions, but we have had an informal discussion and the, it's receptive. Anything that would promote morale and teacher empowerment and student engagement, as well as increasing nutrition, the, the ties between nutrition and educational outcomes are pretty fundamental. Uh, but we would be happy to present this to the school board.
Okay.
To the ISD.
And also, um, Lamar University, would they play a part in it?
Uh, we welcome contributions from the university. They have a sustainability program, uh, they could weigh in here. Uh, I think that once we have a letter of intent, the, uh, there's a lot of people that will come out of the woodwork and institutions that will be willing to contribute in kind, as well as capital. But they're waiting for, uh, a, a more formal commitment from the city that this is not merely speculative, but we're actually working in earnest towards making it come together. But I would expect Lamar University would wanna be on board here.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
Man, first and foremost, I wanna thank y'all for y'all's persistency. I know y'all been working on this for a long time and it feels good to see progress. So I wanna thank y'all for being consistent and doing a wonderful presentation. Uh, one thing that I, that kinda struck me was the commissary for food trucks because right now we have a lot of food trucks in Beaumont and one of the main issues they're dealing with is a place to prepare, prepare their food and properly store it, as well as the farmer's market that we have out on the basketball courts on College Street. I think this would be a big asset and a huge upgrade per, prior to what they're doing. So I kinda wanted to compliment y'all and say thank y'all for coming out, doing this presentation. I think this is something the community should be excited about.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Felschah, then Councilmember, uh, Neil.
Well, your vision is phenomenal and it's so exciting to see, um, the possibilities that you've put before us today. You mentioned fundraising. What type of interests have you had so far, uh, not only with the initial project, but just sustainability over the years?
Well, the interest is pretty enthusiastic. Um, there are high net worth individuals, business owners that, that, uh, would be, they said, follow up with us near the end of the year for pledges as they get into tax season and they're looking to make a tax-deductible contribution. Uh, and then I spoke with the Vice President at Feeding America. It's a nationwide, uh, nonprofit dedicated to feeding America. And there, uh, he's in charge of strategic capacity development. And his reception was very enthusiastic and said that the, that there are a number of state and federal grant-making organizations looking to promote food security that would be interested in a project like this. We would also be pursuing some of the bigger donors, uh, in Texas. There's a lot of family wealth in Texas that would like to perhaps put their name on something like this.
Thank you, and well done with your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. So are y'all wanting this building for free or are y'all wanting to purchase it from the city?
Uh, well, according to the appraisal report, it's of no economic value. So we'd be asking for it for free. It would take-
Who did the appraisal?
Um, the city manager may be able to answer that.
I think it was Bishop, I think.
So several years back?
Yeah, it's, it's-
But it still has land value, correct?
Yeah, we did the appraisal not too long after we acquired it, acquired the building. But yeah, definitely has land value.
So can the city just give property away?
No. And that's, I think that's, um, that's gonna be the question and let me give you some, briefly some history on the building. We acquired it that, right about the time we were doing the Lake District downtown. Uh, didn't really have a purpose for it, but we knew that with the amount of money we were investing in the Lake District, it would be good to have that property, so we did acquire it. Since then, we haven't really used it for much. We've used it for some staging and storage, uh, during hurricanes, um, and disasters. We actually, I think we put the building out for bid for an RFP, uh, several years ago when we were trying, before the city had any local brew pubs or breweries. We were, we were considering that as a concept to try to get a brewery, uh, for the city because there's been a lot of movement, uh, on that in recent years. And that RFP was not successful, so it just kind of has continued to sit. So clearly, we don't have an immediate use for the building. But we feel like with where it's located, it certainly has value. Again, uh, we appreciate John and Brooksie approaching us recently, um, and, and their, you know, energies put into this project and of course, the University of Houston students, uh, put a lot of, a lot of creativity into this project. So where we're at now is really, um, you know, trying to get a consensus from council. And if there is a consensus to try to continue negotiations, that's gonna be the trick, is to come up with an agreement, whereby they would be able to lease the building, um, for a long-term period, which would allow them some control to do fundraising, um, hit certain benchmarks. And if they were able to hit the benchmarks, you know, I would think we would, as John mentioned, we would be willing to kind of extend that deadline. Uh, but the flip side is if not much, you know, if they're not successful, in the case that that happens, you know, we would still retain some control. So that, you know, kinda the devil's in the details of the agreement. But what we're looking for today is some consensus to kinda start that conversation about what the agreement like, might look like.
And to be clear, it wouldn't be giving it away for free. It'd be giving it away in consideration for about a ten million dollar capital investment into downtown.
Well, when I say free, I mean, it's an exchange of, of real property. So I mean, it would be, if there's not direct money coming back for the sale of the property per our charter, I just didn't see how we could do something like that.
If it's for sale, we'd be happy to buy it for the appraised value.
Councilmember Durio, then Councilmember Turner.
How many, uh, people do you plan on employing if you get this project going?
I think if it's fully operational, it's probably gonna be twenty to thirty full-time employees, um, from the front office, curating the tours and then also harvesting and, and handling the actual agricultural production.
Also, is, is there a project like this that's currently existing, in existence, that we could maybe take a look at?
Yes, in fact, we'd be happy to do a field trip. There's a few hydroponic facilities in Houston. A lot of this has been pioneered in New England where you've got such urban density, the food need is important and to cut down on the food miles is important. So, uh, w- we have, um, advisors that have done this and proven this out in New England. Um, and we have, in the region, hydroponic operations. The difference is those are all for-profit operations. And so they're only growing the highest profit margin produce instead of what is the need and, and what are all the different community benefits that could be done there? And we're optimizing it for that, which is one of the benefits of working with a nonprofit on this.
Also, if, if this were to go through and you would actually get this project going and up and running, would they pay, uh, property tax on that property? Would they get on, be on the city's tax rolls?
Yes, they would.
As a, as a nonprofit, I think there may be some considerations there.
If they're operating as a nonprofit, they may. And the other thing is in the empowerment zone, you know, there are potential, uh, ability to waive permit fees and other fees. So there may be some other incentives as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Turner.
Mister Manager, do we know the actual current value of this property and land that they're talking about?
The old appraisal was, was as Mister Woods mentioned, um, The old appraisal was, was as Mr. Woods mentioned, zero, zero due, because there was the, there was the expected cost of demolition, and so that's, that's where we ended up with zero.
What about the, the land value?
The land value, we could get an estimate, because we, the city, own a lot of the land, own that property. We may not have an appraisal value, but we have some adjacent land nearby that we may be able to get a comparable as an estimated land value.
Thank you.
Councilmember Felscher, then Councilmember Getz.
So city manager, in reference to leasing it, you're talking about something like leasing it to them a dollar a year for 90 years? Is, you're referring to something, that's a very simple way of putting it, but yet...
Yeah, maybe not 90, and there's, and the city attorney can jump in here. There's some discussion as to how long out a city can go with a lease before it starts looking like a sale. But yeah, you typically hear 10, 30, 40, 50-year leases, but it would be, that would be the idea.
So there are some limitations to the timeframe?
Yes.
And you mentioned there are some places in Houston that are doing this. What you've presented to us today is very impressive, and it's new for me. I've never seen this before. But in Houston, there are some locations like this at this scale?
Yes, in fact, larger.
Larger than this?
Yes, but they're just doing bib lettuce. So they keep it simple, and they're doing it for profit, so they're just selling the easiest things to harvest and the highest number of harvest per growing season, and they're selling those to restaurants at as much as they can. So we would be growing a much more diverse array of, of food crops.
But this is being done at this scale and even greater?
Yes.
Wow.
These are proven technologies.
Impressive, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, John. Thank you, Brooksie. This is truly amazing and can be transformational for our city. The vision that you've shown, and I was there when the students from the University of Houston were making their presentation to you, and I watched their enthusiasm, and, you know, this, this is the kind of thing, the kind of thinking outside the box that Beaumont has needed for a long time. I want to compliment you, Mr. Boone, for your continuing dialogue with economics on this. I want to tell you how much, again, I appreciate this opportunity to the city of Beaumont, and I'm enthusiastically looking to support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Samuel.
I would just simply like to echo the comments that's been stated thus far. This is a type of cooperation that's needed across the city with BISD and all other entities that are here. I think we've seen, we have several long-term contracts that have worked for us, and I see no reason why we shouldn't be able to move forward in working together to making this, this project one exemplary that others will attempt to do and replicate across our city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, John and-
John and Brooksie, I met with you real early on about this, and it's a beautiful presentation, and when we spoke and you visited Beaumont with the students from the University of Houston, they were very, very involved and tensed on what it could become, and it was just a conversation at that time. It was a conversation over some sandwiches, and it has truly, truly evolved. And I would like to say that I was in Houston at the Hilton this weekend at the Hilton Americas, and the chef has units near the restaurant, which would probably be Hydro, and there are these little cups in these, like vapor chambers where he's growing herbs in the hotel, and it was, it was six of them. And, you know, where anyone coming into the hotel could take a look at it, and they had captions in between each container stating what they're growing and how they're growing it. So I got to see it firsthand this weekend, and I thought it was so neat, and I'm sure it's like a chef's heaven to have fresh herbs, where you could just walk out in the hallway, open it up, and just clip and go back to the kitchen and, and start cooking and not having to wait. It doesn't get any fresher than that. So again, thank you for sticking with it. Thank you for seeing it through, and I think it can be a great, great asset, not only to our city, to the students, and where the country is going with STEM. It's just going to put our children at an advantage. So thank you very much. Mr. Boone, one thing I would like to ask, has anyone else shown interest in that property or inquired of it?
Yes, ma'am. A few years ago, we did have, we were approached about acquiring the building. However, at the time, we felt like it was a use that may not be compatible with what we were trying to do down there in terms of investing in, in, in public amenities. And so the decision, I think, was to not move forward with that.
Okay.
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, I would certainly hope we would not pass an opportunity like this to put another warehouse, because I think that was the, you know, the inquiry was to just use it as a warehouse down there. The whole revitalization of that area with the Lakeside Center, the Event Center, the Great Lawn, the Skate Park, all of that in the Lake District cries out for something more imaginative than a warehouse.
Councilmember Turner.
And Chris, how long have we owned and controlled this property? I know you mentioned it earlier, I just wanted to make sure I jotted it down in my notes.
Yeah, I'll have to go back and look. It seems like about 10 years. Seems about right.
Okay, any other comments? Thank you, thank you so very much.
Thank you very much.
Now is the time for public comment. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. She will call your name as received in order. You will have three minutes to speak. The green light will come on at the beginning of your three minutes, and the red light will come on, letting you know that your time is up. Thank you.
Mark McDonald, 870 21st Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon. I'm Mark McDonald with Remax, 1 in Beaumont, Texas, and I'm coming about, there's a homeless encampment on, I believe, Liberty, and I'm not sure of the address, I don't know what it is, but I know that you're aware of it. On February the 18th, I text several council members, and I think the mayor, about the homeless encampment, and that it's located in the Oaks Historic District, and it's not an allowed use of the property. Excuse me. I talked to a couple of the council member, members about it, and they said they would check into it. So to move forward from that, I really kind of dropped the ball on it and, you know, let it go, didn't call anybody else about it. This weekend, I had a real nice couple drive in from, they were in Dallas, but they're from Florida, retired from Disney, and they wanted to purchase the house at 52 North 7th Street, which is the Darryl Trophy Eddie Bates House, if you're aware of. So it's a fabulous old mansion, and in, you know, pretty decent shape, it needs a little bit of work. So they were excited about the price, excited to move to Beaumont, until they called me two days later and told me, there's a homeless encampment two blocks from that house. So I, you know, don't know what can be done about it, but it's not an allowed use of the property. So I expect someone to check into it and figure out what they're going to do about it. They've run electricity from the neighbor's house and water from the neighbor's house as well. So I just wanted to comment about that and have somebody check into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And Mark, I see you have my old friend Vic back there. Hi, Vic.
Peggy Primo, 52 North 7th Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Hello. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. It is my brother's house that did not sell. My family has been in the Beaumont area since the early 1900s, and every generation has put forth exactly what you guys have talked about here today, revitalization, beautification of the Beaumont area. I cannot tell you how many times I have heard my brother say, Beaumont is not a town, it's my home. I cannot tell you how this breaks my heart. He is, now I've had to put him in a memory care unit because his dementia has taken over. This would absolutely kill him if he knew that the home that he loved so much and moved to the Historic District and built up and beautified and has worked for this city, him and Darryl both. We have scholarships at Lamar in my mother's name. We are deeply ingrained in this city. I was so glad to hear that we had a sale on the house, because I need that money to now take care of my brother. And to hear yesterday morning that these people are not going to buy the house because of this homeless encampment is just unreal to me. I cannot believe that nothing has been done about this. It must be done, not only for me and my brother and the house, but for the city of Beaumont. Who in their right mind would leave a homeless encampment in a historic district? I bet you wouldn't want that near your home or two blocks from where you live, and think about what happens when you go to sell your house. I have to tell you, I'm very angry over this. I really hope, like Mark McDonald says, that somebody will look into this and get rid of it. I don't know how, but this is just not right for it to be there. And I will tell you that yesterday, while I was working at the house, I had a homeless person come up and knock on my door and ask for a handout. And I'm not sure, because when I walked out to my car to load some things, that he hadn't been sleeping in my flower beds. Okay? This is too close to home. Something has to be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Wilson, 2441 Liberty, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon. I'm Barbara Wilson. I'm also a neighbor, I mean, a homeowner in Old Town, also a business owner here in downtown Beaumont, and I work very closely with the homeless, so I have nothing against them. However, I just don't think that this is a proper place for this encampment. I wish they had that legal firm that, you know, when they did their presentation on presenting this option in our neighborhood. But, you know, all the people that are securing this situation, they have churches, put them on your church ground, you know, they have yards, put them over near your house, but this is not welcome. I mean, it was understood that a lot of the neighbors were welcoming this situation, and, and it's not a welcome, you know, and that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Latasha Diggles, I don't have an address for her, it's Beaumont, Texas. I'm sorry? Okay, thank you. Michael Fennell, no address, Beaumont, Texas.
All right. I don't want to be here just as much as y'all don't want me to be here, but I have to do what I have to do. Okay, we're going to start with a quote. Never ever be afraid to make some noise and get into good trouble, necessary trouble. We have a moral obligation and a mission and a mandate to go out and seek justice for all. We can do it, we must do it. John Lewis. If a man and/or a woman cannot report to work daily and earn a living free of racism, free of discrimination, be it race, gender, age, or sexual preference, who are we as a nation? ExxonMobil, and I'm going to say that name, in this case, my case, has been the judge, the jury, and a prosecutor. To ExxonMobil and the judges, I will not comply with your cheating rules that violate the public trust, making rules only enforceable against the pro se handicapping, handicapping the outcome. Constant errors, amendments, changes, docket issues, the truth does not change. When opposition or bad faith actors, you have to react accordingly. What's happening to me is not unique. It's a method of shutting up those trying to get justice. But what Exxon did to me inside and out the facilities was criminal, and will be addressed as such. We will petition the, we will petition this nationally as a hate crime, because that's what it involved, extremists and supremacists. ExxonMobil was a place where black women was called monkey until they cried. ExxonMobil was a place where a black woman reported sexual harassment and she lost her employment. ExxonMobil was a place where a woman talked about safety issues and she was fired. And there's a lot of information that I have, and as I told you before, it will be coming out later. I just wanted to give you an illustration. This is, was on my unit, where Trump was spray painted, written, and graffitied all over the area. I did not want to bring another illustration, because it's just, it's just disgusting, where I had black mold for over seven years all around me, and when I asked management and supervision to mitigate the issue, I was faced with this response, "Don't act like you're not from the hood, you goddamn spook." I was sent this by people over the nation that says, "With liberty and justice for sale, and with the children that we have in this area," on the back, it just says, "Racism is talk."
Thank you, Mr. Fennell.
And I'm going to leave you with this. As this information comes out, I understand. As this information comes out-
Mr. Fennell.
I'm letting you know that ExxonMobil is on the clock for my safety and my family's safety.
Grace Mathis, 150 North 7th Street, Beaumont, Texas.
I am a born and raised resident of Beaumont. I live in Old Town, and I absolutely love it. I am here to address the issue of the homeless encampment on 6th Street. I live about a block or two from that encampment. I wanted to give, essentially expand the information a little bit, because I know that the unhoused population and the problem with homelessness is something that affects us all, that many of us care deeply about. I'm friends with Barbara, and I appreciate what she does as a resident of Beaumont, as a lover of the arts and a business owner, and also someone who interacts with the homeless population and cares about them deeply. I agree with the residents who have spoken earlier that having an encampment in the middle of the neighborhood is not, is not the best solution for anyone involved, the homeless who live there and the residents of the neighborhood. And I want to remind us of something that Mahatma Gandhi said, that the measure of a society is how they treat their most vulnerable populations, and that, of course, includes the unhoused population. So as those who make the decisions, I ask you to do as the people in this ecnotics group have created a community plan, drawing on all resources in the community, and saying, what can we do? How can we provide solutions and housing for people such as this? People such as this man, Brian, I'll say his name is. I went and I dropped off food at the tent encampment. I spoke to him, he had just gotten off work at the car wash on Calder, and he told me that whoever this is, I didn't get a name, that is essentially kind of coordinating this tent encampment, helps them with social security. He said, "This is a transition place. We don't want to be here forever. They help us find a place to live, help us with getting on our feet." So again, hopefully, as a community, you will be able to bring together the different resources in the community, that when you go to these people, where will they go? What is that solution? What can we do by working together to create short-term and long-term- What can we do by working together to create short-term and long-term solutions to this very major problem that we have, just like it is all over the country? I remember hearing Councilman Gutz speaking of a coalition, and I am just curious as to how that's going, how that might play into a situation like that. Can you talk about that at all? No? Okay, still going. Okay, where is that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Vernon Durton, 16436 West Ferry Road, Beaumont, Texas.
Talk my three minutes. Thank you, Mayor, and City Council. Today, two very good presentations, and the common thing from this presentation, they came from young people, this young man and a young lady and a young attorney. Very good presentations. I was impressed with both of them. Want to talk to you all about the last one, about this food desert problem. We do have a food desert, food shortages in Beaumont, Texas, and in the world. That presentation that they gave about the way that food is grown, there's a whole market being grown that way. It's a legal market in most places, but in Colorado, it's a big market. I thought someone would catch that. So growing food, growing stuff that way is real, and it works. Don't laugh, Audrey. But that works, and it is coming of the future. There are whole farms, hundreds of thousands of acres, growing crops that way. So that works. Please look at that very closely. I'm the past president. Hey, Tina. I'm the past president of the Southeast Texas Food Bank, and we are doing lots of stuff now to try to help food deserts. And this would be a great, a great project for Beaumont, Texas, Southeast Texas. We're looking at building a place in Jasper now because of that. And what better way to help revitalize downtown Beaumont than to have something like that, where students, young and old, farmers markets, BISD, can come learn and know the way of the future? That is the way of the future. They're not making any more land. You got to better utilize it. So please look at that very closely and support it. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Now's the time for a council member comment, and I'm gonna start with you, Councilmember Duryo.
Thought you was gonna pull a fast one on me, Mayor. I just want to say a few things. We had our Parachute Neighborhood Association meeting this past Thursday. It was the first time they'd gotten together since before the pandemic went very well. Shaquena Nobles came from EOC and did a hurricane preparedness presentation. Officer Morrow came and did the crime stats. So we're getting that kicked off, and hopefully we're gonna get a few more. We have some other neighborhoods in the work there, getting ready to start off in Ward Four also. Also, this past Saturday, I was able to, I went to a luncheon and presented a letter of appreciation to Felicia Reynolds. She retired after 24 years as a principal of St. Anthony's Cathedral School. Congratulations to her. And also, I went out to the Amateur Radio Relay League and presented a proclamation from the city of Beaumont. I don't know if y'all, they're basically called ham radio operators, and we work with them, especially during times when our phones are out or electricity is out, but theirs is still running and they're able to communicate and they help out a lot. And we did a presentation with them at Gladys City, and that went pretty nice also. And just reminder, everybody, everybody knows we're in hurricane season, so make sure you're ready. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Duryo. Councilmember Gutz.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank the city of Beaumont employees and interim city manager Chris Boone for paying attention to council's request to beautify or attempt to help beautify the city. It has not gone unnoticed that some of the medians have had some landscaping done to them. I noticed that in front of the colonnade where Exogen is, there's some work going on there, and at other locations around the city too, you're gonna see some flowers and other plants that have been put in there, and it's noticed. It really, it really does help the appearance of the city. Again, thank you to John and Brooksie for, and Economics for your presentation. It's very forward-thinking. Thank you for the presentation on the redistricting. Not excited about losing Precinct Five, but Chris needs our help, so, okay. So we'll give him some good citizens in Precinct Five to help balance out Ward Four, so we can do that. The other thing I wanted to talk about briefly was with regard to the homeless camp. It's not the first time it's been discussed here at council. And in fact, I think we had a pretty in-depth discussion about it earlier. The way that the law is written in the state of Texas, well, let me back up. We do not have a camping ban in the city of Beaumont, but the law has changed in Texas so that there is a ban on camping in public places. This particular lot is not a public place. It is a private piece of land. The only way we as a city could legally do anything, and jump in here if I'm saying anything that you disagree with, Ms. City Attorney, the only thing that we as a city could really do anything is implement a camping ban. And there are requirements that the city of Beaumont would have to follow if we were to create our own camping place. That would have to be approved by the Texas Department of Housing and Urban Affairs. There is a laundry list, and we've gone over that before in council. Mark, what you suggested, what, what, I'm gonna address. What you suggested comes within a little bit different gambit. It's with the fact that there is a historic overlay district, and that might be an avenue that we can look at further to see if there's something in those bylaws, those rules, that would prohibit camping within that district. That's not something I've looked at in particular. It's not the ward that I serve, but it might be something that we can pay some attention to. And, you know, I would ask Yishreida, maybe see if that is something that we can look at in some manner. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
Yes, if possible, I'd like to piggyback, we could take a more serious approach on, you know, maybe a solution to the problem that the citizens came and spoke about today in that historic district area and just other areas of Beaumont in general. See if we can kind of take a closer look at it to see what we can come up with. I do want to especially thank staff for Juneteenth. Juneteenth celebration was very huge success. I want to thank staff and everybody. Chris, you worked pretty hard on it. I want to let you know, I appreciate you publicly. So Juneteenth was a great success. The community came out. It was very diverse, and everybody had a great time. But guess what? Fourth of July is around the corner, so we're gonna celebrate that as well. So I do think the city of Beaumont does a great job with quality of life events for the citizens, and it's appreciated. The next thing, Parachute Neighborhood Association meeting. Chris Duryo, I'm extremely proud of you, my brother. I got the opportunity to come out and support you. It was a good look. You had a good turnout, and I think that's good, what you're doing for your people and your ward. And lastly, with staff, I do want to say, I noticed a lot of grants that we went after earlier in the meeting. I want to piggyback and say, I appreciate that because I think grants is something that has been underutilized, and I'm starting to see, we're starting to pay more attention to it. So, you know, there's free money out there. We're going after it aggressively, and I really thank y'all for taking the time out, being strategic, you know, working through that. And all the presentations were great today. Thank you as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Felschah.
Yes, just for the sake of clarification with our citizens, it's, the comment's been made that with executive session and projects like Deep Blue and Project Mercury, why are you guys naming these things in code? Why aren't you being more transparent? Please understand that we do not name these projects. The individuals that are negotiating with the city bring them to us. They're the ones who named them, so it's not an issue of trying to hide anything. It's just that was their choice. Also, July 4th is coming up. Enjoy the celebration. Please remember to be careful with your children with fireworks. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Samuel.
I'd just like to agree with others. I appreciate the project that you brought forth, Economics. That's very exciting. We are doing many things in downtown Beaumont. We're doing things across Beaumont, but it really doesn't matter unless you see it in your area. And we have to continue to try to make sure those all across our city can see that we're working toward the betterment of all the wards in Beaumont and all the citizens of Beaumont. Many times we fall short. Many times we don't meet the mark, but we're still attempting to get there, and we're trying to get there together. So I appreciate staff. Thanks to what you do. The event, the Juneteenth, was a success. I know the Fourth of July will be a success, but we're continuing to work on things downtown, north end, south end, as well as east and west. But we have to do it together, and we need that support of all the citizens. But more importantly, I thank the staff for what y'all do. You make it happen, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to echo that I appreciate you guys coming and talking today and looking forward to working with our attorney and manager's office to figure out strategies to help make this work for everybody. But back to the homeless situation, you know, this has been kind of a touchy subject the entire time I've been on council. The last time, we granted a bunch of money to Salvation Army, and that was gonna be somewhat of a fix, and it's my understanding that the Salvation Army house is not even filling up every night. And, you know, I've received probably more than my fair phone calls from Mark McDonald. And, you know, I gotta admit, I would be mad as hell, and I know every single person up here would be too, if that was taking place next to y'all's houses. And I challenge staff to help us figure out a way to take this the next step, because what we're doing is obviously not working.
Thank you. City Attorney Reed.
Yes, ma'am. So first, I wanted to thank council and the mayor and interim manager Boone and all of the city staff for your condolences and kind words and patience with me and my family. As we buried my grandmother last Saturday, it was very difficult to me, but your courtesy in giving me some leeway, not being as responsive as I usually am to your emails and calls was very gracious, but I'm back and we're ready to work. But I really do appreciate that. As it relates to the homeless, I hear you. We are aware of the problem. We have been working to find solutions to that problem. There were some things that you said today that we may be able to use moving forward in trying to work with them and getting them. But one thing is, is interesting when dealing with unhoused or homeless, is that some of them are choosing and aren't as willing, but we will do everything in our resources to make sure that we kind of come to a solution that's both, you know, appeasing to the neighborhood as well as those individuals as well.
Thank you. And city manager Boone.
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Bart? Okay, thank you. Well, I have a list here, and first of all, I would like to say thank you, John and Brooksie, for your presentation. It is totally thinking outside of the box. It's something new. It's something innovative. It's something that our future is going to, and our children will need it in the future. So thank you for your presentation. Also, for the map reassignment, he's left. I think looking at it, you got a full view of the makeup of our city and the way it's divided, and now I see that it will be equally divided with the new presentation of the map. Also, to the historic district, I think it's one of the most beautiful neighborhoods we have in our city, and with homes being sold today at unprecedented value and speed, I am so sorry that you were not able to complete your transaction, but hopefully we can come to some type of resolution together to make that happen, and I'm so sorry about your brother. My heart goes out to you. Also, Pastor Tara Thompson, she's left, but wanted to thank her for the prayer today. And on, let's see, where do I start? I had a full week. On yesterday, a Newport president was installed. Want to congratulate Mr. Pat Anderson. He will be the Newport president of the Port of Beaumont. But I want to also congratulate and thank Port Georgine Guillory. She was the past president who passed the gavel on yesterday morning, and she, she was a history-making president. She was the first woman to be the president of the Port of Beaumont, and also the first African-American female to be president of the port. So congratulations to President Georgine Guillory, outgoing president, and new president, Pat Anderson. I want to also say to Councilmember Duryo, thank you for the two proclamations that you read for me this weekend. I was out. I'm on the board of Texas Municipal League, and we had a board meeting in Houston, and that's where I got to see the display at the Hilton Hotel of the herbs growing in the lobby, but thank you so very much for that. I work with Councilmember Duryo on setting up the Ward Four Hurricane Readiness presentation because we are in full swing of hurricane season right now, and as hot as it is, dear God, I am praying we will not have a hurricane. A lot of people are still out of their houses. Houses are still being built from the destruction of Hurricane Amelde, and so hopefully we will get through this season without one. It's been really, really hot, and the heat has been in triple digits, and hopefully we'll get some rain this afternoon that will hopefully cool the heat down. But I want to also say that it's been a lot of conversation about the light at Washington and 11th Street. I had a discussion with the railroad and the representative that is working in our area, and we can say that the light should be working real soon, correct, Bart? Well, we're coming to...
We've got agreement with them that if we can connect the new signal box to their old equipment and get it working with the old preemption, that they'll allow us to turn it back on. Unfortunately, the wiring between the two was destroyed during the road project, so we're gonna have to get their technician out and have us run new wire, but we are working actively with them to try to get that back on.
Absolutely. We are working, and I get, as a matter of fact, I got a call Saturday in Houston about it, and it has not been ignored. As Public Work Director Barkovy, I just said, all of the wiring was destroyed, and people say, "Well, why don't you just get the part and turn it back on?" It just doesn't work that way. And there has been several accidents at that intersection, so we want it back on as much as everybody want to have it back on. So hopefully, we can come to a solution to get that fixed, and just wanted to make a report on where we are with that. Also, there are a lot of firefighters here in the city. They chose Beaumont for their national firefighters' training, and on Sunday morning, I was over at Ford Park to give a proclamation and welcome to all of the firefighters that are here from all over the state of Texas. So if you see a lot of firefighters, that's why. I just encourage them to spend... I just encouraged them to spend a lot of money while they were here in town. But I would also like to say that we had a great, fantastic Juneteenth celebration, and I want to thank Chris Boone, who was very instrumental in setting that up, and to the wonderful, wonderful staff who set that up. It's amazing that it was hailing on Gladys Street and storming, and it was storming in the Pear Orchard of Beaumont. We did not get a drop of rain downtown Beaumont. All while that was going on, we, unfortunately, we had to delay some of the performances, but we didn't get a drop of rain. We had lightning, and that's why we had to do the delay. And people kept saying, "When is the act gonna start?" Well, you can't do an act with lightning. So, but the food was phenomenal. The car show went off, and everyone was out celebrating, and when you looked across the field, it was a multitude of nationalities and race of people, and it was a very, very peaceful, very beautiful occasion, but it was so hot. I really, I got heat exhaustion. I had to sit down and cool down. It was very, very hot. But again, a very, very successful Juneteenth, and I would like to say that I want to thank the members of city council, the staff who supported the Juneteenth celebration. The community came out. They were involved. It's very important and vital for us as elected officials to be involved in the events that come to our city. We were elected to represent the city as a whole and as a whole community. So it was also Father's Day, so I want to thank Councilmember Duryo, Councilmember Turner, Councilmember Samuel for coming out and supporting the event of Juneteenth while demonstrating their leadership and being out there to support the event. We also have Fourth of July coming up. Ask everyone to please come out, support Fourth of July. The dollars are being spent on fireworks and the festivities, and so we hope that everyone come out and support Fourth of July as they did Juneteenth. We're looking forward for a safe and festive Fourth of July. And again, if you have fireworks at your house, that you should not be lighting and popping because they're not legal within the city limits, and it's been very, very dry, so please be careful during your Fourth of July holiday weekend. So thank you for coming, and we will recess into executive session. Thank you.